To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carr?
Yes, on one point three to one point five, I stand on one point four and one point six.
Mrs. Fintinac, yes. Mr. Fontmes?
I'm standing with the twenty-three, the best wearing with the one point six, one point six and one point four.
Mr. Gallus?
Yes.
Mr. Yeller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gil?
Yes.
Mrs. Reece?
Yes.
Mrs. Reece?
Yes. Good evening. On behalf of the Gloucester Township Board of Education, I love all of you very much. Prior to the start of our formal video session, I prepared some notes I'd like to share with you. They may be a bit lengthy, but the importance we feel must be conveyed. I do not ask you to applaud or to interact on a weigh-in, but we have been listening. These are anticipations to perhaps answer some of your questions in advance. In light of several recent deaths, I am in front of you housing several homes and many residences. Most of you are here tonight due to a hot topic issue that is security. I promise, each and every one of you, the safety of your child is of utmost importance to each and every one of us. We have not and will not put your child or our school in danger. There's not a person seated at this table that I would doubt or question in not dating that state of the law. However, as a parent, I understand your concerns, and as a school board member, I understand your concerns. As a taxpayer, I understand and appreciate your concern. I share the same feeling as all of you as a mom, but we have to help our children. But as a school board member and a leader, your children become our responsibility within this compliance discipline. We take our role in this seriously as if each and every child are our own protectors. I cannot emphasize enough to you the importance of your child in our care. We strive to make decisions for the greater majority, always with the children as our focal point. We do take this job seriously. To set the record straight and to clarify what we learn, this Board of Education has not made any decision to alter school security, as you probably know, which is two RSROs, which stand for Roman School and Police Officers. They police our eleven schools and to test our knowledge, three other schools during the compliance of the school week, Monday, Friday, Fridays, and Saturdays. At the request of some of our public and in the effort we do to better understand the three hundred thousand dollar payments we receive from our township local business office, four of the RSRs, we have tried to fulfill our obligation, duty, and responsibility as elected school board members. We asked some questions. This is our job. Anything less would be unacceptable. We reached out to Gloucester Township municipality approximately a year ago for explanation of the SRo interlocal agreement for shared services, which was presented to us through the law. We were interested in a full word presentation of what the program included and pricing information, as the invoice we received was substantially more than anticipated. Unfortunately, this was a much more laborious process than we had envisioned. At the end of the ten-month request, we had to have our attorney set up a meeting, which occurred, excuse me, December 2014, on a Friday afternoon. At that time, it was clear, we were not being presented the nuts and bolts of the program. We could gain this information from our principal's community. Also noteworthy, we did receive confirmation that during the normal rotation of the school week, our lady SRos were policing at least three other areas. Two are public and one that is its own district and already receives its own tax burden. And they also received stated of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars in compensation. As parents and guardians of those children, we realized they're also taxpayers and it would be our expectation and ours that they should receive the same services that we receive. However, we, as Gloucester Township Board of Education, were under the impression that the three hundred thousand dollars billed was solely for our five daily network coverage. We now went from one-eleven coverage down to one-fourteen. Our business office then sent a letter to township business office asking for a meeting to discuss the reallocation due to the fact that services were being run to at least fourteen schools, but only that we can't. A second meeting, also arranged through our attorneys, was finally granted in late January 2015. This meeting was far less productive than the first. No viable solution was found by court writers, crystal clear. We were told, crisis advice, take your pants off your service. But remember, the safety of our children is our first priority. So what we, the community, should have done, the simple conversation between the two respective business offices of the public entities, has turned into much, much more. It is clear that direct communication has been missed. Wrong messages have been taken and received. Misinterpretations have generated a flurry of negative and unnecessary mess. In January 2015, we had reactivated the school security committee. They were charged with discussing and investigation of any lost security options available to same settings. This could include SRos, SLAs, which are special law enforcement officers, and more private security roles, or a combination of within one type of service. We wanted to educate ourselves and better understand what a three hundred thousand dollar plan was versus other mental options. This was not something this Board of Education, your prior boards, had ever investigated. We were actually researching the feasibility of greater protection for your child and all the children of Gloucester Township public schools. We wanted to see how to best allocate our security resources and challenge and budget growth. We were again investigating options. This was not meant in any way, shape, or form to discredit the integrity of the current RSRO program employed by Gloucester Township Public Schools. We wanted enhancement. We wanted more coverage. We wanted to have a clearer understanding. We do realize that through New Jersey School Board Security Task Force, we reported SRos as the first to assist school security, and we understand that as true. We also understand that the task force recruited it to be an unfortunate economic battle between other budgetary obligations. They encouraged us to work on local level to resolve that financial burden for both parties. They cited Washington Township as a prime example of local cooperation between the township police and the county school board. I call that proof. I personally spoke with council president. We both clearly agree, the safety of the children was what council and the board's priority goal in this situation. Yes, our act finances that need to be resolved, proposals to be received, we were new following. Expectations outlined, details provided, work needed to be done. Our conversation was very positive, and we would hope we would be able to foster a good local innovation. Council was respectful of the job we needed to do and understood that research was part of our obligation. And that brings us to today. The fact that these conversations never did happen opportunities to project, negativity blossomed. And countless hours and dollars had been spent trying to discredit our challenges. We, as a Board of Education, do not feel that we can vote on something to remove it while they yet to receive the full information. So I would tell you all senior students, senior ladies, excuse me, regarding the future of the security measure are still being discussed at the board's security budget committee. A formal vote will not be held until all reports and research have been properly vetted. No one at this table has forever known that your child in danger. This isn't a viable to win, it's simply an issue that needs to be solved. I would now tell you who are over to our super parent job, no telepathic, that would be fine.
Mrs. Reece, can everybody hear me? It's not included in what I presented, but we'll call it one point seven, and that would be the star student program. So I'm gonna pull over. And then what we'll do first is we'll bring Rob here at elementary school, the administration, the administration department, and assistant principal Maria. All right, I'd like to, first off, on behalf of Ariel Elementary School staff, students, and administration, welcome everybody here this evening, let's see all the faces out to support our students here at Gloucester Township public schools, by the time you fill out on the Board of Education. And tonight, I would like to call up Cecilia Monahan, who's the chief who recognizes Ronald Ardran. Ronald, one up.
Okay, I would like to nominate Ronald Ardran. Ronald has been in my class since third grade. He is always a hard worker, really engaged himself into every aspect of learning in my class. He greets myself and his peers each day with a friendly smile and hello. He offers his help to others, whether it be in our class, cafeteria, hallway, bathroom, or special. Many of his peers can count on Ronald to go above and beyond when it comes to a lesson or just helping someone unpack and get ready for the day. Ronald is a pleasure to have him, and he exhibits the three Rs here at Ariel School. I am proud to be his teacher.
Good evening. This time, I'd like to introduce one of our second-grade teachers to introduce our first-year student, Miss Christine Gallow.
I nominate Wayne Gaines in second grade from the shining stars. Wayne is a determined, hard-working, and motivated student who inspires his peers every day with his enthusiastic desire to learn. Wayne has grown so much since September. Now, when he is faced with an obstacle, he stands up to the challenge and reminds himself that he is capable of achieving success in every endeavor. Not only does Wayne always do his personal best, he encourages others to do the same, and reminds his peers to just believe in yourself and you can do it. Wayne is a true shining star and deserving of this award. Your proud teacher is Ariel.
I'd like to bring up next from the administration of our Union Valley Elementary School, Principal Tracy L. L., and Assistant Principal Edward Purvis.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. We are so glad to present two of Union Valley's shining star students this evening. The first lovely boy you're gonna meet, his smile lights up the room the second that you see him. I'd like to invite Donald Simpson to come join us at the podium. Donald is being recognized by not just one of his teachers, but two of his teachers. His fourth-grade teacher, Liz Jackson, and his kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Barjupak.
Good evening. While reflecting upon our fourth-grade Union Valley student Donald Simpson's nomination and deciding on what I was going to share, I could not help but choose to begin sharing a little bit about him by pointing a question to his audience. You see Donald tries himself and connects another one of his old brainwaves to his audience by asking them a question. And in our class, we call that Donald's diet, and I would now do the same. So audience, have you ever wondered how we teachers are able to get it all done? You know, collect and sort homework, follow taking attendance, lunch count, and checking in homework plans? Let's not forget the tireless effort of answering numerous questions during independent student practice. Students like Donald are how we get it done. After coming in and getting himself unpacked and doing his morning work, Donald consistently goes to the front of our classroom, takes our turn assignments in, and sorts them for me and helps out with orders. He even puts a sticky note on the top of each file, letting you know which student paper it's on the sixth. During our daily independent practice portion of our math课, he's eating the math brain that he is, quickly and accurately completing his work, and goes to the back of our classroom to complete an enrichment activity. Donald is always willing to take advantage of any awkward opportunities to further his learning. He even has created extra math worksheets for himself with challenging multi-digit division and multiplication problems. His efforts to a better visibility do not only apply to the favorite subject math. Without being asked or assigned to do so, he writes his spelling words multiple times each week in person, just so he can perfect his first writing. He will erase and open-ended reading results or writing assignments completely just to make sure he is answering the questions to its fullest. While his efforts sometimes require multiple attempts and frustration sometimes does it, this determines he does not give up. Donald is bound and determined to work hard to overcome any academic difficulties he may encounter. I am confident in his determination will serve him well in the future. Not only is Donald continually working to strengthen his own skills, he is frequently seen lending a hand or an encouraging word in his peers. Donald is not only a student in our classroom, but in other classrooms as well.
Donald not only has gone above and beyond showing academic initiative and care for his peers in his fourth-grade class, but he has also completely transformed one of special kindergarten's learning experience this year. As we all know, some students have social and academic troubles unlike in here, and may need extra assistance in order to find academic success. When this particular student is not responsive to his peers, she is known to jump in her hoops for Donald when he comes into the classroom on his own recess time to help her learn.
If Donald was absent for the day, I will often get a phone call around one fifteen from his student kindergarten teacher looking for Donald. You see, when a student here like Donald is absent, everyone notices. There are some people you meet in the world that you don't see inside of them. So tonight, Donald, we want you to hear loud and clear that you brought. Your love for learning, your dedication towards improving your own reading and writing, and your willingness and ability to come alongside your peers to help them in this critical. Thank you for making me smile every day, and thank you for making a difference, not only in the lives of your peers, but in the lives of your teachers as well. May you continue to make your family and teachers even more pride as we watch you further grow and develop into a young man who is ready to be. Congratulations, Ronald.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure of introducing you to our next star student. This is a beautiful young lady in first grade, named Miranda Santos. Miranda, please come on down.
Good evening. I have chosen Miranda Santos as a star student. Although Miranda is only in first grade, she is the most active, intrinsically motivated and compassionate student I have ever encountered through my seven years of teaching. Miranda is an energetic, fun-loving lady. During the fall months, she can be seen on the soccer field. When soccer comes to an end, she enjoys dancing and on-point dance center. Academically, Miranda always strives to do her best work. She consistently takes her time to complete her schoolwork and homework. If she does not understand a concept at all, she will ask her assistants so that she can reach her full academic potential. Lastly, as I stated before, Miranda is the most compassionate, kind student I have ever encountered. She is always helping her classmates, two younger sisters, her parents, and myself, her teacher. The most considerate and memorable act Miranda did this year was write a letter of encouragement to another student independently. One morning, she came in school and asked me if she could please give this letter to the student. It was so thoughtful of the kid to see a six-year-old try to encourage her peer to have a great day, and that she believed he could do this for his teacher. She is a model student, and I can be more proud of her. I cannot wait to watch her grow into a young lady, beautiful, intelligent. Grow into a young, beautiful, intelligent lady I even found. She will definitely leave a long lasting impression on me, for sure.
Before I move on to the James W. Lilly Elementary School, I wanted to just sit back in the back corner and have one of our assistants, Stephanie Schneider, at the wave, in her black jerseys. There are somewhere over here pictures of all of the star students tonight. And families, please take a picture of your child with you. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, there. After this, our students with your administrators and your family, Stephanie wants to take some pictures of you, please, over in that corner. So take your picture, get your picture. Rather than, Mrs. Reece, ready? Rather than having the board sit down at the conclusion of the next two star students, I will need to speak to the Board of Education, Mr. Balling, executive session. So at the conclusion of the star students, we're going to have a half-hour executive session. And we have two things. We have a personnel item, we have a contract item, and we have an item that is...
Student act.
Student act, correct. So, Mrs. Reece, I would need one of the board members to make the motion to go to the section at the end of the star student program and have a board vote. One vote, please.
Make a motion at the end of the star student.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Carter to the executive session following the star student. So you will vote for him.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Fintinac?
Yes.
Mr. Fontmes?
Yes.
Mr. Gallus?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gil?
Yes.
Mrs. Reece?
Yes.
Mrs. Reece?
Yes.
Thank you. And from James W. Lilly Elementary School, can I please have Principal Angela Rose Bowns and Assistant Principal Robert Halls?
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here today. I don't know if any of you read Forbes magazine, but back in February, an article ran that said the happiest job right now is that of a school principal. And in looking at that, some people would say, a school principal, that's the happiest job? When all the hot topics got there and all the controversy and all the things going on, you would think it's the happiest job? Well, it truly is, because despite everything going on in education, long as we focus on the children, it's truly the happiest place to be. So I thank you for this opportunity to come before you and bring two of our shining stars from the local school. Our star, Ms. Julia Nelson, why don't you come on?
Mrs. Shuck was the first teacher that had been blessed to have Julia in her class at Billy's School. During her kindergarten year, Julia demonstrated kindness to others while displaying a cheerful and positive attitude. Even at this young age, Julia exhibited a zest for learning and was a role model for the peers to follow. Julia has an engaging personality that makes you feel happy to be in her company. In first grade, Mrs. Chivoni said, "I remember Julia well. She was always smiling, happy, and she worked for it every day. She was one of the classroom helpers, and I could always count on her to help classmates and me." She has a beautiful singing voice, and I remember the first week of school, when I was asking students to say the alphabet, she sang the entire song in the most beautiful voice when it was her turn. It continued with Mrs. Nagel in second grade, who says that she's sweet, well-mannered, and a responsible girl. When Julia was in second grade, she was a ray of sunshine in my classroom. She was enthusiastic about school, always smiled and eager to learn. She was always ready to lend a hand to anyone who needed her help, whether it was another student or a teacher. Although Julia had a quiet nature, she was always willing to share with, share her amazing talent as singer and delighted class when she would sing for us. With her kindness and manner, even in second grade, her leadership... With her kind, patient manner, even in second grade, her leadership qualities were shining. She was always a wonderful role model for other students. Mrs. Weisler has Julia right now for impact, and she said that Julia warms the room. She had a caring personality, thinks of everyone around her. Getting off the bus in the morning, Julia greets everyone with a warm hug. She often...